Meeting to order. Dear Chairman, Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live, guide us this afternoon as we make our decisions. Christ name. Amen.
Amen.
This is the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of the Noonan City Council. Yeah, the minutes of the regular meeting of September the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five before y'all. I entertain a motion, we adopt the minutes. Second. Motion, the second, we adopt the minutes of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. Next, we have several appointments to boards and commissions. Mr. Kritko, bicentennial.
Next agenda, please.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins, Christmas.
Next.
Next. And Mr. Kritko, convention authority.
Next agenda as well.
Thank you. Mr. Thomason.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Gabby White to the Cultural Arts Commission.
Second.
Motion, the second, we reappoint Gabby White to the Cultural Arts Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. Ms. Jenkins, development authority.
Oh, he's coming back for that one.
Okay. And the next two, ethics commission, Ms. Jenkins.
Unfortunately, both of my people moved, so I've got to find you.
Okay, all right, we'll put them on the next. Mr. Kritko, ethics commission.
Next agenda as well, please.
All right, thank you. Keep Noonan beautiful, Mr. Gillen.
Well, I'm going to break with tradition here. I'm going to nominate Kevin Barbie. How about that?
All right. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Mr. Kritko, planning commission.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Jordan Marchman.
Okay, Jordan Marchman. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, the second, we nominate Jordan Marchman, planning commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you. And I have asked Mr. Odom if he would like to serve another term on the Water and Light Commission, and he has agreed to do so, so I place his name in nomination.
Second.
Motion, the second, we reappoint Parnell Odom, Water and Light Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. And one that's not on the list today, keep Noonan beautiful, Councilmember Jenkins.
I would like to nominate Claudia Nelson.
Second.
Yeah, motion, the second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried, thank you very much. Mr. Phillips.
I didn't.
Anything? I don't have anything today. Under new business, this first item is a public hearing that I will open at this time. This is an application for alcohol beverage license. Taco Mama Retail Premise Pouring Sales of Distilled Spirits, Malt Beverages and Wine, four forty Noonan Crossing Bypass, Suite two oh nine. The reason for this is a new business, and this is a public hearing that I've opened on this. Opportunity for anyone opposed or in favor to come forward, speak. See no one move, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for representing, you're representing, I met you earlier. Thank you for opening a new business in Noonan, we appreciate it. When do you actually open?
So, we're, like, we're at December the fifteenth, uh, eighteen.
Okay, good, well, thank you for being here. We appreciate it, welcome. Okay, everything's in order, I'll ask for a motion on the issue.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second, that we approve the application for alcohol license at four forty Noonan Crossing Boulevard, Suite two oh nine. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. The next item is for the FLOST, I'm going to call him, Mr. FLOST, new presentation of the Floating Local Option Sales Tax, and then a consideration of a resolution at the end. Mr. Phillips.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think you all know that we have a referendum question on the current ballot, which early voting started today, runs through the end of the month, with actually the election day being November the fourth. We've been doing a series of educational presentations around the community for the last four weeks. It's been our intent to try to educate the community as much as we could, so that when they go to the polls, they can be an informed voter to make their decision on whether to vote yes or no on the referendum question. Obviously, as you know, it can be a very complicated ballot question, so we're just trying to put information out and answer questions. So I got a real quick slide deck I want to go through, shouldn't take just a few minutes. Go ahead, Meg, there you go. As most of you know, you've heard the terminology, House Bill five eighty-one. House Bill five eighty-one was approved by the Georgia General Assembly last January. House Bill five eighty-one was intended to provide property tax relief for homesteaded properties. The relief was to be an assessment cap, not a millage rate question, but an assessment cap that was be tied to an inflation number each year. That did not actually become law upon the governor's signature. It actually had to go to a public referendum statewide, which occurred last November. And if you recall, it passed statewide. It wasn't an individual county-by-county question. It was either going to pass statewide, or it was not going to pass. And it passed in excess of sixty percent in favor of the ballot question. But in the, in the actual legislation, when it became affected, there were a couple of things I'll talk about. Number one being an opt-out clause. There was a provision placed in the legislation that allowed the taxing authorities, the city?
Cities.
The county and the school system to elect to opt out. We're here today only to speak about the city of Noonan. Obviously, the city of Noonan chose not to opt out, along with Coeita County and the other cities in Coeita County, with the exception of Palmetto. By not opting out, the legislators placed an option inside the legislation that allowed the communities that did not opt out to ask for an additional one cent sales tax called FLOST, Floating Local Option Sales Tax, in order to further reduce the obligation of property tax relief. Gets a little complicated, because House Bill five eighty-one was homesteaded properties, and the one cent sales tax would certainly apply to all properties, and I'll explain that in a little more detail in a minute. I think it's important for the voters to know the current composition of our current sales tax structure. In Coeita County now, if you go and make a taxable purchase, you pay seven percent at the cash register. That's online sales included. And that seven percent composition includes the first four pennies goes directly to the state of Georgia for the operations of the state government. One penny goes to the school system for their educational ELOST, which is also, by the way, on the ballot question for this November. The sixth penny is SPOLOST, which is our special purpose local option sales tax between the cities and the county, and it's used only for capital projects. And the seventh penny is LOST, which is local option sales tax, which has been in existence, I think, since the nineteen eighties, and it has to be used for further property tax relief. If you received your property tax bill recently, which all of us have, I've received mine, and if you look at the itemization on that property tax bill, you will see a sales tax credit. That sales tax credit is a result of that seventh penny called Local Option Sales Tax. Obviously, if FLOST is approved on this year's ballot, the sales tax inside of Coeita County would go to eight percent. Again, you heard me mention earlier, House Bill five eighty-one, which is the floating homestead exemption statute, only applies to homesteaded properties. Homesteaded properties meaning that you both own and live in your property. It does not apply to any investment properties, industrial property, or commercial property, per se. If FLOST is successful, and per law, we have to use it for property tax relief. That property tax relief is across the board, and it would apply to all forms of properties, as you can see there on the, on the screen. Residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. A little bit about the distribution. As you know, the city of Noonan and Coeita County and other cities entered into an intergovernmental agreement that would call for this FLOST referendum, and it also set out the distribution of the tax proceeds. What happens with the tax proceeds is, once a taxable sale is made in Coeita County, that retailer submits their monthly report to the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue then takes this intergovernmental agreement and distributes the proceeds to the cities and the counties based upon this schedule. So it doesn't matter where in Coeita County the taxable purchase is made, that all the proceeds are distributed per this agreed-upon formula. And what this is, is twenty twenty census data. We agreed, I think you recall, that we wanted to make it pretty simple this time. We didn't want to get into the tough arguments that we did during the lost negotiations, so it was agreed up on early by all parties to simply use straight up the census formula. All right, I get this question a lot. How would it affect me if I'm a city of Noonan property owner? Well, I, I can tell you that, based upon that distribution model, if successful, FLOST will produce more revenue to the city of Noonan than we currently bill in property taxes. And given that position, even though we don't set the millage rate for twenty twenty-six until next August, I am very confident, as the manager, that I will be standing in front of you in August, if successful, recommending that we set our property tax millage rate to zero. So what does that mean? You say I've done the simple math, using our current millage rate of three point zero eight, it would equal property tax savings of a hundred and twenty-three dollars for every one hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. I've given a couple of examples there on the screen. A residential home assessed at four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars would have an annual savings of about five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I've used an example of a commercial property valued at two point three million dollars would have an annual savings of about twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Keep in mind, this is only the city of Noonan portion of the tax bill.
As we've been saying in our presentations to the different groups, we're not speaking on behalf of Coeita County or the other government entities as to how much tax relief they will provide in the form of their millage rate. We've also been saying, when we've been visiting groups, it's very individualized. People are going to have to make the decision themselves, based upon their situation, whether it benefits them or whether it doesn't benefit them. And every situation is, is going to be different upon their household income, their property tax values, et cetera. But I've taken these particular two examples and turned it into, how much would I have to spend at the cash register to offset that? Well, it's pretty simple, you'd just simply take that tax savings and divide it by point zero one. And in the first example, the residential homeowner would have to spend about fifty-two thousand dollars worth of taxable purchases to break even. And in the commercial example, that commercial property owner would have to spend about two hundred and eighty-six thousand of taxable purchases. So those are just two examples. Again, every individual voter will have to take the information and decide what's beneficial for themselves in order to make an informed decision of voting yes or no. Ending up the presentation by, this is what the ballot question looks like. We've been saying that we didn't write this ballot question. You know, the Legislative Council and the General Assembly, they'll, they'll write the legislation and the questions. So as typical, some of the ballot questions can be a little bit confusing, and I'm not going to read it. But we have been presenting this information, so that when the voter goes to the polls, they'll be able to recognize what this particular question actually means for them. All right, and with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from council?
I do. Before, and I've already asked Mr. Phillips this, this question, but I want to make sure that people understand it, obviously better than I did. I know that, you know, state tax does not apply to food. But for the record, does this tax apply to food?
This, this tax and the other three pennies of the local tax does apply to food, packaged and processed food. So when you go to the grocery store, there will be another one cent added. Instead of paying three cents for your tax on your groceries, it would be a four cent. But there's a very exhaustive list of what's exempt from sales tax, what's not exempt from sales tax. I couldn't sit here today and reiterate to you what those are. I would advise anyone to go to the Georgia Department of Revenue's website. They have information on what is exempt and what's taxable. That's where we've been sending people, but yes, food would be subject to the additional one cent sales tax.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask that is because our, you know, people on fixed incomes, whether you are a resident of this, a homeowner in the city or not, will be affected by that. Now, of course, there are lots of good things about this, this is why I supported it in the first place. But I think people need to go into this with their eyes wide open, to understand what that means for them and their families when they go to the ballot.
Everybody, you've got two questions?
Yeah, sure.
Well, one is, I know you don't maybe have exact, but in, what is the number that we use for the percentage of out-of-county residents that purchase inside our county?
That's, that's a great question, Councilman Thomason. There have been, and we're, first of all, we're a little bit hesitant to throw a number out, because there's no real scientific way to get that correct. I know that there's been some studies done using credit card transactions and cellphone data that showed that number to be over sixty percent of out-of-state buyers. But we, we will say it's a good number, it's a significant number. And I think it's easy to say, when you go to Costco parking lot, a Sam's Club, or Target, you simply look at license plates, and you will see quite a bit of Fayette, and Meriwether, Troup, Hurd, et cetera, that, because we're the service center for that community. So hesitant to throw out a specific number, but it is a, it is a good number, and there would certainly be a, and I hate to use this term, there would be a shift in the tax obligation from being one hundred percent property owner based to our visitors carrying a certain portion of that responsibility.
Yep. I'm always, I always love hearing, I'm talking to people, say, from Troup or other counties, and they really see Noonan as a little regional shopping area. I mean, eighty-five coming through, what we have out there certainly does draw a lot of people. So I would agree that it's a significant number. I don't know what number, I would, yeah, I would agree. So the next one is, what do, what does it look like if FLOST doesn't pass?
No, that's, that's, that's another really good, excellent question. You know, we, we've always been in the position, when we've had these SPOLOST referendums, that, you know, we never have been in a threatening position to say, hey, we're, that X, Y, Z is going to happen if it doesn't pass. Number one, I would say to the, we've been hearing from a lot of our constituents who've been wanting some form of property tax relief. And I think this is one way they could get some property tax relief. Now, from the, from the service provision from the city of Noonan, yes, we, we certainly are going to have some service needs. Our staff has about completed the draft budget for twenty twenty-six, and I could tell you, we've drafted that budget without FLOST, because we don't know if it's passed at this point in time. And we could tell you, it's a pretty, pretty flat budget. Obviously, with the rollback rates and some other revenue sources being somewhat flat, you know, we, we don't have the ability to address some of the service needs and some of the requests we've had from police and fire and public works as far as staffing, because we just don't have the revenue that would do that. If FLOST were to pass, we, we would have some options to do that. Obviously, we would come back to this body and discuss how to best utilize those funds throughout the city. But yeah, yeah, I mean, we got some service provisions. I know that you're, you're a big champion for sidewalks and pedestrian improvements. Our, our capital budget in the general fund is probably going to be in the seven hundred thousand dollar range. There, there's no money in the general fund budget for sidewalks and pedestrian activities. All of that is in the FLOST program. So we, we would have some good conversations with this body if FLOST were to pass on how to best utilize those proceeds.
So may I?
Go ahead.
Sure. So, right now, the numbers that we collect in sales tax are some three to four million dollars more than we collect in property tax. So the resolution in front of us allows, you know, kind of speaks to that a little bit, and it would allow you, if, if you felt the need to do it next year, to come to the council and in, in August and ask for a zero percent millage rate if this passes. If it, if it passes and you do that, and you're able to go to zero percent millage rate, what happens to the surplus? Is that why you're saying there would be extra money there? What does the state law say you can use the surplus?
Well, state law is, is very clear, and we have consulted with Georgia Municipal Association, the legal team, that you have to use the proceeds to roll your, to reduce your property taxes.
Right.
You can't reduce it greater than zero.
That's right. Once you go to zero, you can't, saying you've got money left.
So you, you can utilize those for, for services, that is correct.
Is there any, so there's not any regulation as far as reserving any of that money? You can use it in that budget year?
Not in, not in the statute itself. It would be up to a discussion with this body on how to utilize those funds. And that's why I said, I think that would be a good, healthy conversation. And I, we would be happy, at that point, if passed, to lay out options on how to utilize the funds, you know, where to maybe invest the funds, may, you know, you could even do some other type of forms of, of relief in terms of, in terms of other fee schedules or something. I mean, there's a lot of different things that you could consider, and we'd be, if passed, we would look forward to bringing those options to this body.
So are there any limitations?
No.
I mean, you're talking about options, but limitations?
Only limitations that this board and our, our policies and charters would provide.
Okay.
Have a question. You mentioned that, that the impact that it would have on our police department, fire department, and other service delivery areas. So what type of impact is it going to have? And I know from the hiring, you know, fire trucks, et cetera, and everything, that they need to do their job. Big impact?
It's staffing. I mean, Chief could, could speak, Chief Brown could speak. We've added very limited staffing in the public safety arena over the past few years. It's been several years since we've added any public works, street maintenance, concrete maintenance, staffing. And we've been really fortunate that for a number of years, the east side of the community has been relatively new infrastructure. But now, some of the part, east side of the, of the city is now approaching twenty-five, twenty-plus years of age, and we're starting to see more needs for infrastructure maintenance on that side. Facility maintenance, crews, you know, as we, as we continue to, to, to build our facilities for, for the, for the crews, expand the fire stations, et cetera, you know. We, we have four facility members citywide that's maintaining every city facility, so. And, and street lights getting called in at night. So we, we just certainly have some staffing issues that we will have to address at some point in the future. And those, those, those discussions will happen, regardless of whether this is a yes or a no vote.
Sure.
So just one, may I, some, not really a, I guess it's a form of a question, but in all the outings that you did and presentations that you did, how would you assess the turnout as public interest?
The turnouts that we experienced when we went into neighborhood associations was, was not, not a great turnout. We, we would have good turnouts at our civic organizations. We, we did one today with good participation for the civic organization. But yeah, I mean, we, we tried to get out into the communities and sometimes, you know, Tuesday night or Sunday afternoon, and it was, you know, kind of hard to, you know, pull a good attendance. We have had a, a social media campaign, trying to get the information out, too. Of course, that reaches a certain number of people.
Is that working all right? The social media aspect clicks?
I know a friend of Tyler, they, they ran some, some articles on the FLOST, so. You know, I'm, we're just trying to hope that when the voter goes to the poll, they know where they can get access to the information, so that they can make the decision whether it benefits them or not.
Right.
Today, at the Kiwanis Club, when I, I opened the program, How We Got Here? And my first question was, if you're in the room, you've heard of FLOST or House Bill five eighty-one, raise your hand. Ninety percent of the people raised their hand. I mean, it was.
That was our best response to that question, yeah.
Compared to the first time we, I went to a group of maybe forty or fifty people, it was the other way. It was ten percent raised their hand.
I want to ask the question, because I know in my, where I live, there were six people who showed up out of six hundred and fifty homes. Just like that, put that out there. So what, what is of concern if we're putting out this information to educate and the awareness? And then I think what we're really, I think this is going to tell us as to the amount of awareness people have and the amount of effort they want to have in order to participate. There's one thing to have the information, the other thing is to participate. So I think we've done a good job in attempting to get it out. So it's good in a crowd of, how many did you have at the Kiwanis?
Hundred?
That's good, that's good.
Good, good turnout, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, we do have a resolution before us to consider. Any discussion on that, or if there's not, if we've had?
Motion, we approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Second.
To approve. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on that, on this question? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, thank you, Mr. Phillips, is our chief with a list of road ra, roadways.
Road rage, yes.
Could lead to road rage, approved by, for speed enforcement. Chief, how are you?
Mayor, council. Thank you. This is a list of roadways that are approved by Georgia Department of Transportation that is for allowing us to do speed detection devices, radar, laser. On the, on this list of roadways, these are roadways that have been approved. We have to go through this process every three years, and then it has to come before this body to be reviewed and signed off on so that we can resubmit it to GDOT so that we can maintain our speed detection.
Any questions, chief?
I do. I just noticed the, it says Noonan High School and not Central High School on this for MLK. Noonan High is not on MLK.
So this came, this is straight off the list from DOP for the correction on the roadway.
It's Central Educational Center, celebrating 25 years this year.
Yep.
So the only.
Anyone else?
I just have a simple question. And on this list, as you submit them and you get the approval for them, what you're waiting on, correct? You submit the list, but are the listed in order which you will, how you will address them, or it's just going to?
It's nothing we have to address. This is just, this is basically you sign, this body is, is saying that you agree and allow us to do speed detection.
But this list is the submission list, and based upon, let's just say it's, it's thumbs up, and then you just go ahead and go down the list systematically. Is that, that's what I'm asking?
We'll be, we'll be allowed then on this list, these are the roadways that we can enforce using speed detection devices.
That is it. Thanks.
So does that mean, this, this is only a list for Noonan PD to do it? Does that also allow this, this list to be used by the sheriff's office, the state troopers? I mean, how extensive or who has?
This is for us. This is for Noonan Police Department.
Okay. Then the sheriff's office goes through a similar process?
Yeah, they would have to have their own process, their own paperwork.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, the motion here would be to approve the list so that the MPD can send it on to the state.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, chief. Next is a consideration of a guaranteed maximum price for Greenville Street and Bicentennial Park projects. Mr. Craver, how are you, sir? Good.
Consideration of a contract award, thank you, for guaranteed maximum price to allow for New South Construction, Goodwood Mills, Kaywood, with the support of Comprehensive Program Services to start construction on Greenville Street Park as well as the Bicentennial Park. As you may recall, in October of 2024, you selected both those firms. Over the subsequent 11- to 12-month staff with support of the construction team, design team, and Comprehensive Program Services has created a design that we believe fits the mission and desire of this council. And so the staff's recommendation in that of Comprehensive Program Services is to proceed and execute those guaranteed maximum price amounts. I can also call to your attention, last October, when this group approved the design and construction contracts, that was also set a budget of $4 million for construction. And as you see in your packet, the guaranteed my, maximum price numbers are under that budget. Funding sources, special purpose local option sales tax.
Any questions? None? Is there a motion?
I make a motion?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the consideration of guaranteed minimum pro, maximum price for Greenville Street and Bicentennial Park project. Again, any discussion? Y'all liked that, didn't you? Yeah, no, it's not going to happen. Okay. Motion and second there. Any discussion or questions?
I do have one quick question. Under the allowances page, which was page 53 of 63, there's an, in addition to $51,000 for, I might, or did I get a head on the, on the arboretum? On the arboretum, it said an additional allowance of $10,000 in addition.
Yes, sir. Councilman Carrick, I think that's coming up next.
Okay, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead too far. Too many pages.
And we don't think we'll need that tip.
All right, thank you.
We'll get there in just a second.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so any, anything else on the guaranteed maximum price for Greenville Street and Bicentennial? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carried. Now, on to the arboretum, consideration of contract award for arboretum planning services. Ms. Kelsey, how are you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Good. How are y'all? Good afternoon, Mayor, council. So y'all recall back in May, y'all gave us authorization to make application for an outdoor stewardship grant. And we, at that point, we're going to apply for an arboretum project for a piece of property that we own that's about 30 acres in size. It's over near our public works facility. City manager and I met with the state and discussed our project and asked some questions and decided in order to have a really strong competitive application, that we would push off to the next funding cycle, which is the '26, '27 funding cycle. So that's kind of where we are right now. We have reached out to five firms, they're landscape architect firms. We did not do a formal RFP, but we did reach out to these firms that the city is familiar with, they've done work for us before. We asked them for pricing on, one, a community engagement piece, and, two, a design conceptual plan. Those proposals are attached to your agenda materials. You will see that staff is, is not recommending low bid here. This is a very specialized project. We feel very strongly that WLA, which is a $51,000 proposal, is the strongest application. We also reached out to one of our partners, which is Plant Noonan and Scott Burdis here today. And he was kind enough to come to City Hall. He actually independently reviewed these proposals, and he, too, feels strongly that WLA will be our strongest competition point to help us win this grant. If you look at WLA's proposal strongly, you will see that they actually have someone on staff who has designed, planned, and actually run an arboretum project. So that's kind of why we feel very strongly about their proposal. Again, just to be aware that they are not the low bid on this project. I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone?
Did you check to see if WLA was willing to reduce their price some if they weren't the lowest?
We did have conversations with the top two proposals, at least in our mind, who those top two proposals were, but we did not discuss, you know, the idea of lowering that price with them.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure, move. Second.
Motion and second, we approve the consideration for contract award for arboretum planning services. Again, any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We are under visitors and petitions. The first one is an update from Hank Arnold regarding Cowie de Force and the opioid program. Mr. Arnold, how are you today? Great, thanks.
Pretty big attendance for a 2:30 council meeting.
Yeah, it's overwhelming.
In comparison to some of the others that I've attended. But good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share a little bit about these updates. Cowie de Force started as an addiction recovery support center officially in 2018, and we bought a place on 36 Thalbidi about, in 2022, and started operating out of there in 2022. And we've been making some huge success in the impact that we've made for folks that struggle with substance use disorder. Our mission is to provide recovery support services in the community for individuals and family members impacted by addiction. And so one of the things as the director and the founder is I start looking at our most vulnerable populations. So obviously, we are looking at jails and prisons, we're looking at our court system and our juvenile courts. We've established some successful partnerships with those agencies. And our next one that we started looking at was Piedmont Hospital. In 2022, Cowie de County ranked fourth highest in Region Six, and Region Six is made it, made up of 31 counties for opioid overdose deaths. It's a huge loss of community members, and it knows no bounds, and it knows, it doesn't discriminate, for sure. And so I start looking at places where, where we can make the biggest impact, and Piedmont Noonan made sense. In 2022, I started the MOU process with the hospital system. I thought it would be relatively quick. It was not quick at all. It wasn't with Noonan Piedmont, it was with Piedmont Healthcare Incorporated, and that took us a year to get a formal MOU. Anytime I made an update or a change to one word, it was a two-month turnaround on that process. And so that was painstaking would be an understatement. But we saw it through, we were consistent. In 2023, we entered into a partnership with, with Noonan, the city of Noonan, for their abatement funds, their opioid abatement funds. And we've been following these abatement funds really closely, and they come to, the state had to opt in, and then each city and county municipality had to opt in. And the city of Noonan opted in, they didn't really know when they would start getting some of these payments, and they started rolling in. We began some conversations about some productive ways to use the funds, and I thought that while we had shored up the MOU with Piedmont, we weren't necessarily sure how we were going to fund that program, but we just wanted to start the process, and it couldn't have come at a better time. So we started to implement peer recovery support services at Noonan Piedmont in 2023. And these services are, are offered by our staff. We have three full-time staff dedicated to the project, and we, all these services are available 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days a week. So that's a pretty good amount of time and energy. And we had to become HIPAA compliant, get our, our data platform, and just everything getting ready to go into the hospital, what, we had to increase our liability insurance to $6 million of liability insurance, and just getting our staff prepared and trained is a whole undertaking. But these are our numbers in the last 10 months. So we had 95 initial encounters. These were individuals that we met immediately or after a hospital admission. Of those 95, we've had 939 follow-ups after discharge. And that, that is a combination of, of people that struggle with addiction and family members. So we're looking at 872 peers served directly and 67 family members that were served and continue to be served. Out of that number, we've made 88 successful referrals to treatment and recovery programs, and 78% of those individuals stay connected with us after they return to the community after treatment. From there, we've had 121 recovery coaching sessions completed by our staff in our office after discharge. Each number represents a person reached, a life change, and a step toward a stronger community. Because of the city and union's continued partnership and support, this collaborative effort is saving lives, rebuilding families, and strengthening our community. Together, we are restoring hope to those struggling with addiction, creating pathways to long-term recovery, and building a healthier community. I'm extremely grateful for the life-saving work and your partnership, and at this time, I'm open to any questions or comments that you may have.
Questions of Mr. Arnold? Anyone? It's a great program. We appreciate you being such a strong partner with us. I hope it can continue. Anyone?
I just want to say thank you for being a great neighbor.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, no action needed there. The next is action, request from Foundation Church to block three parking spaces on West Washington Street during the Munchkin Masquerade for an ice cream truck. I think we ought to do this.
So moved.
Is there a, is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign. Motion carried. The next is a request from College Temple Neighborhood to the annual Halloween street closures from 5:00 to 9:00, continuing on the theme. Is there a motion?
Motion to, second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Request from NHS Band Boosters to close Army Road on November 1st from 8:00 AM to midnight for the band competition. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
In the soul south?
Yeah. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carried. A request from First Baptist Church to close Madison Street between Brown Street and College Street on October the 23rd from 2:30 to 8:30 for a preschool fall festival. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carried. The next is a request to close North and South Court Square on October the 31st, 2025, for the Munchkin Masquerade from 9:30 to 12:30.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Motion carried. That ends our regular agenda this afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Is there a need for an executive session? No. Then there's a need for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and second, we adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Pose like sign. Thank you for being here today, ladies and gentlemen. We adjourn.